Good afternoon, everybody. Thanks very much for attending. Welcome to this meeting of Strategy and Resources Policy Committee. Meeting is open to the public. No one is here today with us, but there may well be people watching us online. Meeting has always been webcast. We've got no public questions or petitions for today's meeting. If everyone could just switch their phones on to silent, there's no fire test planned, and I'll go around and ask everybody to introduce themselves, starting with members and then officers, starting as always on my left.
Councillor Anne Glanville, member for Bromheale and Shalwell, and Chair of Adult Care and Social Care.
Yeah, councillor Douglas Johnson, Chair of Housing and Member City Ward.
Good afternoon, Abdul Ghayyum, councillor for Firth Park Ward.
Fran Bellbin, councillor for Firth Park Ward and Deputy Chair of the Committee.
Councillor for Shire Green and Brightside and Chair of Education, Children and Families Committee.
Good afternoon, all. The here and now, Chair of the Finance Committee.
Councillor Joe Otten, Chair of Wasteland Street.
Councillor Sheffield, Ecclesham Ward.
Councillor Curtis Crossland, councillor for Baiton and Chair of Communities, Parks and Leisure.
Councillor Penny Baker, councillor for Sunnington Ward, subbing for Martin Smith, Vice Chair of Housing.
Good afternoon, my name's Diane Hurst and I'm an elected member for Richmond Ward.
Thank you all very much. I forgot to introduce myself, I'm Tomlin, I'm the Lead of the Council, Chair of this committee. Councillor Ben Misscoret sends apologies, Ben is having a nightmare rail journey today on getting back to Sheffield and isn't making it in time. I'm sure he, like all of us, will be pleased that public ownership of the railways is on its way. He's sorting out rail, which is one thing that the new government, you'll be pleased to know, I'm sure, on this side of the committee will be very delightful to know that the public ownership of our railways bill is the first to clear the commons under this new government. So change is coming, you know. Yeah, indeed. Okay, right. Starting on my left, if the officers could introduce themselves, please, thank you.
Afternoon, everyone. My name's Claire Taylor, I'm Chief Operating Officer.
Afternoon, all. Greg Fell, Director of Public Health Integrated Commissioning.
Afternoon, everyone. I'm James Anderson, Director of Policy and Democratic Engagement.
Hi, I'm Kate Jonas, Chief Executive.
Hello, David Hollis, General Counsel.
Hi, Craig Rogerson, Democratic Services.
Afternoon, everyone. Tom Smith, Director of Operational Services, I'm subbing for Adgem, I'll be Strategic Director today.
Alexis Chapel, Strategic Director for Adult Care and Wellbeing.
Philip Gregory, Director of Finance and Commercial Services.
Thank you very much, everybody. So there's no items today that contain exempt information. Do any members wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business today? No, thank you. Minutes of previous meetings are next on our agenda. I'll ask EU to approve as a correct record the minutes of the meeting that we held at the end of last month on 29th of August. Members happy to approve them as a correct record? Thank you all very much. Item five is appointments to subcommittees, and this is to note that the monitoring officer has authorised the appointment of councillors Karen McGowan and Tony Downing to the substitute member vacancies of the charity trustee subcommittee. Duly noted. Item six is public questions. As mentioned, we have no public questions today and no member questions were received as well. Item number eight is the retirement report that sets out the details of staff who have recently retired from the council, and I would like to ask everybody to endorse the report, but also to note our thanks and appreciation for all the years of service that those employees have given to the council. Thank you all very much. Item nine is the work programme, and with that, let me hand over to Craig.
Thank you, Chair. Members have a copy of the updated work programme before them. The complete programme is attached at Appendix One. On this occasion, there's no new additions, but there has been some movement on some items, and that's, the details of that are set out in Section Four, page 38. Also on that page, a number of cross-cutting items are identified for you to give a steer on and to note. Subsequent to the agenda being published, there are three issues that I need to draw members' attention to. So the first one is on the Gambling Act 2005 policy, and it's recommended that S and R agree that this policy be considered by waste at its next meeting on 8th November and submitted straight to full council on the 4th of December, and that will free up some valuable time for us on our November agenda. The second issue is on the Housing Growth Delivery Plan. That was proposed for October, and actually now it's going to be necessary to take that to the November meeting due to some work needed to support the local plan examination. And then finally, on the item on voluntary community faith and social enterprise sector, which is down for October, that is going, you might notice that come through with a different title, that's going to be broadened out a little bit. What that does mean is that for the October agenda, that is looking a lot more manageable now, that at one time was looking quite busy. However, you will see that the November agenda is looking very congested. So the suggestion is I liaise with James and with the report office to see if we can manage some of those items onto later meetings, but even so, I think we need to plan for a long meeting. So the suggestion is we can plan a break mid-meeting and ask members just to block out some time in their diaries and anticipate a long session, really.
Brilliant, thank you very much, Craig. So a number of cross-cutting issues there, we just need a steer, and Sheffield? Oh, sorry. So hopefully colleagues agree with those sensible recommendations from Craig, and then yeah, really just to reiterate the point around November, I think let's just plan for a longer meeting at this stage, and if Democratic Services could just extend that in our calendars, then it means that colleagues will have that time blocked out, and hopefully by giving people advance notice, that's not going to cause too much of an issue with work or childcare responsibilities, but if it does, let us know. Councillor Mohammed.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thank you for the update, Craig. Clearly packed agenda, but there's one thing missing, which is the actions from the last full council on the motion around the winter fuel allowance cut, and one of the asks was to actually for the council to look at how it's going to roll out the work that the South Lac had been doing, not on here. When is it likely to come, Craig? Because it's quite important, the clock's ticking. It's quite a topical issue as well, as we all know.
Yeah, fully aware of that, councillor. The details that we got were just before the agenda was published, so we didn't get a chance to put it in this work programme, but wheels are in motion on it. The officers concerned have been contacted and we can report the details in on the next work programme.
The pre-agenda meeting for the next S and R is, I think, next week, so we can have a look at that then. Councillor Johnson.
Thanks, just two points, yeah. Certainly, I hadn't picked up that, but it's actually a really important point, so I'd second that if that's needed, so it can be noted for the work plan for this time. The question I got was, I think it's on page 45, and I know the page is a bit odd on the printed packet, but it's another reference from full council, when we talked about five years since declaring the climate emergency, and it was about the lack of progress in some respects and that, but it says the Office of Finance and Sustainability and Climate Change Team will explore the practicalities of issuing green bonds, and will report that to S and R Committee with initial findings by September. So I was just worried that this is falling off the work plan somewhere. Do we know when that might be scheduled for now?
I think what you're looking at is actually the agenda for the November meeting.
So is that now coming to?
If you look at page 44, you'll see that it's scheduled in, so yeah, slightly later than was originally suggested in the wording there, but it's timetabled for November.
Okay, all right. Okay, great, thanks, as long as it's on there.
Okay, so colleagues happy with the work programme? Noticing Craig's points there? Great, thank you all very much. So item 10 on our agenda today is around electrical testing for the period 2024 through to 2030. This report's going to be presented by Dean Butterworth. Dean, for the benefit of people in the room and people watching at home, if you could briefly introduce yourself and then briefly introduce the report, please, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm Dean Butterworth, I'm the council's Head of Investments and Maintenance for the Council Housing Service. Hopefully the report is self-explanatory, I just want to give a little bit of context in relation to this. The council's got just over 38,000 homes. There is a current legislative and regulatory requirement to have an in-date electrical test certificate for each of those homes within a 10-year period. The consultation that is taking place with the Regulator of Social Housing at the moment is to move that to a five-year timeframe. That creates a challenge for us in relation to, we've got around about 15,000 of our properties that won't fit within a five-year timeframe, and in December of this year, we've got a further 6,000-plus properties that will be moving outside of a five-year timeframe. The importance of this is around the conversation that we've had previously around the regulatory judgment that would be served by the Regulator of Social Housing, and part of our planning, even before the regulatory judgment was served, that we would be undertaking a piece of work to move us from a 10-year testing programme to a five-year programme. What that means is an increased budgetary requirement, not only from the original budget, but also during that period of time, we've seen quite a high maintenance inflation uplift in relation to the cost of undertaking these pieces of work. So whilst at this moment in time, we're still within a 10-year framework for testing, the likelihood is in 26, 27, the regulation will change over the moving to a five-year programme of testing. Therefore, this report is trying to put in place the relevant finances and the programme work to make sure that we can hit a five-year programme at the end of the 26, 27 financial year. Happy to take questions, Chair.
Thank you very much, Dean. Are there any questions, comments, feedback from members? Councillor Otten.
Thanks, though, you know, I recognise the importance of this. I just, it's a, hopefully not an idle question, do the standards, the safety standards recognise the enormous increase in the number of e-bikes and other chargeable devices that people might charge in their homes, and that particularly if their, you know, batteries have been replaced with replicas or whatever it is, that these cause a risk of house fires that are extremely serious, difficult to put out and whatnot, is that within the scope of this? And is, you know, and is there another piece of work we need to do to think about fire safety from fires of that sort of kind of cause in our estate?
Thank you, councillor Otten. The testing is purely around the fabric of the electrical supply within the building. It's not about how somebody then uses electricity within their home. So the plug sockets are fit for purpose, the light switches are fit for purpose, and the ceiling roses, they are safe and they are secure in terms of the usage. The one thing that we are looking at as part of our work programme for the next financial year is how we deal with the whole aspect of new electric coming into buildings, and that there's two parts to this. We currently have a process and a policy for how we respond to requirements of mobility scooters. Some mobility scooters, we've known for the last 15, 10 years, as we look to support independent living within our stock. How do we make sure that people are storing and using and recharging the batteries for mobility scooters in a safe way? The other aspect is a growing trend at the moment around e-scooters and e-bikes, and particularly the storage of e-scooters and e-bikes in our communal areas and how we deal with those, because our communal areas have got to be sterile. Very clear conversation that we have on a routine basis with the South Yorkshire Fire and Rescue Services that we need to make sure that we do that. At this moment in time, there is no current guidance, and there's not much guidance coming out from central government either in terms of the Building Safety Regulator around what we do in relation to those new batteries and how we charge those batteries. But that is the one thing that we are going to be working with the BSR in the coming year to identify in the first stage, what's the education and communication that we need to put out to our residents in relation to what they do? Is it a case of you charge it for an hour and you unplug it, you don't leave it plugged in overnight in case there's an inherent fire risk? The one reassurance that I would give in relation to the safety of our homes, that from our fire risk assessment perspective, that our homes are fire-rated to a 60-minute standard, so if there is a fire within a property, then the other property surrounding that should be safe until the fire service can get there and put the fire out. But it's an emerging issue, not just for us, but across the whole sector in relation to how we deal with those emerging challenges of batteries.
Thank you very much. I see councillor Johnson, anyone else who wants, no, councillor Johnson.
Yeah, thanks, okay. Yeah, probably important to note, this isn't about pat testing of people's appliances or whatever they plug in, it's about the structural stuff. I just wanted to ask the question, obviously, this is a very substantial investment, something's been talked about with the Housing Committee leads, it's coming here because it's a substantial change to the overall budget, which is going to add pressure, so it's not something that we take lightly, but I just wondered if you can give us a flavour, Dean, of what the current tests pick up when we were in checking on the soundness of electric supply in tenants' flats and houses? Can you give us an idea of what the tests pick up at present in terms of how frequently they pick up things that need rectification in some way?
Thank you, councillor Johnson. The cyclical process at the moment deals with all the electric supply that comes in from the consumer unit, then to each individual socket, light switch, ceiling rose, whatever it might look like in relation to the current that is coming through those, and making sure that there is no inherent risk that sits within there. The council's got three different processes for picking up issues. So the first process is moving to this, which will be a five-year testing programme, which would test the safety of the property, however, that would also identify if there were any immediate risks. So if there were bare wires, or if there's anything that was an immediate risk, what we would class as a cat one or a cat two, health and safety risk, that contractor would immediately deal with those particular issues. We've also got the Electrical Upgrade Programme, because we know across our 38,000 stock, whilst the electric supply into that property is safe and secure, we know that the infrastructure and the wiring behind that needs to be improved. So we've got an upgrade programme as well that sits behind, that will upgrade programmes. That again would pick up any inherent point straight away, and then through our repairs and maintenance service, we've got the standard responsive repairs where a customer can ring up and say, I've got a problem with a socket, a light switch, any aspect of their electrical service, and that would be picked up. And it is picked up as a priority rating in terms of how quickly we'll get out and do that repair. So we should have no properties that have an inherent risk beyond a 24-hour emergency response in terms of doing that. And again, part of what we're doing for customer engagement is pushing out the information that says, if you identify this issue, whether it's gas, electric, whether it's health and safety or a threat to life, this is what you do and this is how you report it, and this is the service that we as a council will respond to that particular issue.
Thank you.
Thanks. Can you just pick up on how frequently we pick up issues that need rectification?
In terms of rectification, it will be on this five-year period, in terms of testing cycles. At the moment, it's 10 years, we're moving to a five-year cycle, but again, what we want to be able to do is to give our customers the confidence that when they ring us up with a particular issue, we'll respond to it in timescale. But at the moment, we're moving towards this five-year timescale, we'll pick up all the issues that we identify within any particular property.
Okay, thank you.
One more question we need to get, so the question that probably lots of us have been asked is of course, why we can't do this in-house, and it's recommended that we bring in external resource. Can you just say what's the capacity for dealing with it in-house?
We've had lots of conversations in-house in relation to capacity with electric work, and I say at the moment, we are undertaking a number of different work streams, with the electrical upgrade process and the electrical repair process, that we're working very closely with our repairs and maintenance colleagues, but there just isn't capacity within that to do virtually what is 21,000 inspections within the next two-year period to get us within a five-year cycle. What we'll be doing on a regular basis during that period is going, what is then the future capacity both in-house and external? So at this moment, what we're looking at is going 100% external for our gas, electric safety certificates. We may have a hybrid model in future if capacity allows us to do that, or we may move back to a whole-house model at some point in the future, but capacity and the requirement to move to a five-year cycle means that we're going to have to go external for procurement of this contract.
Great, thank you very much. Really helpful. So I don't see any further questions people would like to ask, so with that, I would suggest we turn to the recommendations, that this committee approve the additional revenue budget allocation required within the housing revenue account as set out in the report, and that we endorse the proposed approach for the council to commission two external contractors to deliver the carrying out of five-yearly electrical testing and condition reports for domestic council dwellings, let customers, our colleagues happy to support those recommendations? Thank you very much, thank you, Dean. Right, turning then to item number 11 on our agenda for today, which is an update on the Homewards project. Colleagues will remember that in June 2023, Sheffield was announced as one of six locations to be part of the Royal Foundation's Homewards initiative. And we are joined today by a number of colleagues who are going to give us an update on the work of the Homewards project over the last year and also looking forward. Thank you all very much for joining us today. What I'll ask is, but starting on my right with Alexis, you could all briefly introduce yourselves and then introduce the report, please, thank you.
So I'm Alexis Chapel, Strategic Director for Adult Care and Wellbeing.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Allen, Head of Citywide Housing Services for the council.
Hi, my name's Hannah Crossen-Smith, I'm the local delivery lead for Homewards in Sheffield, I work for the Royal Foundation.
Hi, and I'm Michael Corvishley, Head of Local Delivery for Homewards at the Royal Foundation.
Thank you all very much. So Alexis, over to you.
So I'm going to give a brief introduction and then I'm going to hand over to colleagues. So I'm going to start with, this is a really exciting opportunity for the city to work together with the Royal Foundation and with partners to end homelessness. And ultimately, this is about acting with compassion and not taking a very much an early help with preventative approach, very much founded around social justice so that it can improve the lives and outcomes for people across the city. And very much our vision is that people have a place where they can call home and live the life that they want to live, and homelessness could be such a traumatic experience for people, and ultimately, all the work that we are doing together and wanting to do together will ultimately able to improve the lives and outcomes of people, so people don't have to experience the trauma of being homeless. So very much, you know, there is a strong partnerships in place in Sheffield, and that's what I love about Sheffield, the strong partnerships, that gives a good foundation ultimately about working together and very much actually using the mindset of together we get things done to actually go and help us to go and work together to end homelessness across the city. And the partnership with the Royal Foundation brings that added value and also a range of wider partnerships which could help us to go and escalate the pace of change, but also going to help us to go and think about how we make this sustainable in the longer term, which is key to core of all this. So very much what I'm going to do is hand over to colleagues to go and give a bit more information, so.
And so for those who might not know, Homewards is a five-year programme launched by the Royal Foundation, working across six locations in the UK, Northern Ireland, Aberdeen, Scotland, Newport, Wales, Sheffield, Lambeth, in a borough in London, and Beattie, Wilmouth, Christchurch and Paul. So we went through a selection process last year, and the aim of the programme really is to demonstrate that together it is possible to end homelessness. So the real core message here is that often the crises of in society or things like homelessness are left at the door of local authorities, are left at the door of charities, and the real driver behind this programme is to look at how we can build stronger, broader coalitions in each of those locations to deliver the resource, impetus and efforts to really get on that trajectory to end homelessness. And the approach we've taken is to, in each of those six locations, is to develop those broad coalitions, and we've been doing that over the last year or so with colleagues from Sheffield City Council, and in the midst of that is trying to develop areas of focus, areas of priority, and some of the activities that Sheffield would like to pursue in order to get on to that trajectory. And I think the key messages from us would be, Homewards is very much a value-add programme, so we're here to be additive to the work of Sheffield. This is not about steamrolling in and accusing anyone of not being able to do their jobs, it's very much celebrating the fantastic work that already takes place, but recognising often people are consumed by meeting the urgent and kind of need that's at the door, and how can we as a programme with that broad coalition bring in resource and focus to do some of that early intervention and prevention work that sometimes gets sacrificed in order to meet that urgency? In terms of kind of what the programme brings in the immediate, we have some additional capacity in the form of HANA for Sheffield. We also have 500k of seed funding, which is there to help get some ideas or initiatives off the ground. We have access to a really broad network of expertise and partners, both nationally and internationally, which we refer to as the Homewards Partnership. That includes both those in the sector, academics, experts, but critically for us, what we refer to as activators, who are predominantly private sector partners, who, again, going back to that idea of who are the people that we can bring in to really support us in this work? Where we're at to, in the programme is we've been working on those coalitions, working on those priorities, and we've been developing an action plan for each location, and these action plans are there to tell that story of the value-add of Homewards in each location, how are we contributing value, but also there to kind of speak to a number of different audiences, critically the public, given the platform we have, we come under maybe slightly different scrutiny than other programmes of our nature before, but also critically as a tool and a way of engaging those activators and private sector partners who may want to step forward and work in locations like Sheffield to support us. And we're also developing alongside those local action plans, what we refer to as a national action plan, which is really the things that the foundation has been working on with a range of different actors, and I can speak to some of those points. This is things like how can we leverage in funding and finance to support our locations, how can we bring in additional expertise and resource around things like data and analytics, what can we do with national employers to broaden the number of opportunities for secure and well-paid work? But that's a kind of starter for telling we want to work over the next four years with locations to really hear what the needs are, and for us to be tasked to go away and pursue kind of further priorities, further opportunities.
Yeah, I'd just add that I've had the wonderful experience of working with the Royal Foundation and more recently HANA, who's our local implementation lead, and I really want to emphasise the strategic fit with the council's plan and our agreed priorities. We've adopted a home prevention strategy and action plan in Sheffield with our partnerships, and we're very much working together with the Royal Foundation to build on that, so where there are synergies, that's what we're concentrating on, so we don't duplicate, but we absolutely add. It's been very exciting for me personally to have access to that international as well as national experience that the Royal Foundation brings, and I absolutely believe with the wider reach because of the profile of this, we will get more people to understand what housing problems are, what homelessness is, and how they can deal with it either individually or as a community or as an organisation that operates in Sheffield. So we've already started our work on how the action plans will fit together and complement each other, and something I'm really excited about is the innovative housing project that Homewards are bringing to Sheffield, which will enable us to try something new that really does look at how to get to the heart of what's happening to people and address that, and if that demonstrates that we can do that successfully, that's something that the Royal Foundation are looking to scale up, so that's really exciting for us.
So I just want to say thank you very much to colleagues, I think this is a great opportunity for the city, and if I may do a recollection to a few years back, what Michael and I were talking about the other day is when the Royal Foundation did the programme around mental health, what that really did was end the stigma around mental health, and actually, what I think this will do is very much the weight of the Royal Foundation and working with the council is a great way to change the narrative around homelessness, and that could be such a powerful thing in how we take that forward, as much as the added value, so there we go.
Brilliant, thank you very much indeed, and I think it's important to, that Homewards has come Brilliant. Thank you very much indeed. And I think it's important to, that Homewards has come as an agenda item for this committee, not to say that the council is going to own this project, this programme, but to recognise that we're part of it, but also to give a greater visibility within this organisation. Because we want to have a one council approach to engaging with Homewards, recognising that the issues that lead to family breakdown or people, you know, having to leave their current place of living and becoming homeless are not just a responsibility of the homelessness team to sort out. They are a whole council response. There are many complex factors that lead people to become homeless. And the value of Homewards is really changing the conversation away from the sort of immediate reality of homelessness to being upstream and dealing with the causes that lead to people being homeless. So a number of colleagues have indicated that they want to speak. I'll take rounds of three and then we'll come forward with people. So councillor Belwin, I'd like to see first, and then I've got councillor Baker, councillor Agenzio, and then I'll come to councillor Crossland. But let me take those three first. So councillor Belwin.
Thank you. Yeah, I really welcome this programme and to echo the comments of the chair there, I think it's so important that we're focusing on that prevention of homelessness approach that is very much not just about housing, but about health, about educational opportunity, about domestic violence and so many other issues. So I'm very pleased to see us taking that approach and I think taking that kind of mission-led kind of approach as well. But I think we're seeing at government level as well. And I think that will be incredibly valuable and I think everybody for their work towards it. What I wanted to ask around, the paper refers to, and I think you referred there to our own, the council's homelessness prevention policy. The paper also talks about the Change in Futures approach to multiple disadvantage in the city. There's clearly a lot of overlapping work here and it feels as if there's an opportunity to bring that work together and, you know, have an action plan that actually, there's a danger as well with the, that we end up with duplication and so on. And I think that is picked up in the point around the governance of the programme and potentially there's governance of Homewards, governance of City Goals work and other pieces of work across the city. So I think it'd be useful, you say you've consulted around the governance, it'd be useful to hear a little bit more about what is coming back from that and to think about that opportunity to bring this work together.
Brilliant. Thank you. I'll take a couple and do a round. So councillor Baker, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you again for the work you're doing. I mean, it's amazing how you've come and suddenly not only you've engaged with us, but you've engaged with our partners, our partners that have been working in the city all the years with us that have meant that people have got help and support of all ages and all times. You've linked in with that. I've seen it myself on online meetings. Hi Hannah, nice to see you in live. I'd heard them asking questions and unfortunately a lot of the answers get, people go to Suzanne for, but hey ho. That's normal, isn't it, Suzanne? Yeah, but they're all there. They're all working with you. They're all sharing their information and you're sharing with them. And when you share information, you share effort. That's when you get success. So we're really pleased to be here in Sheffield. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Baker. Councillor Agenzio.
Yes, thank you very much for the report and I'm really kind of pleased with the fact that we're looking at prevention and early intervention. And there is so much information that we have about what causes homelessness. It's just making those links. It's recognising that there are lots of organisations, voluntary sector organisations, charities in Sheffield that already do this work. So it's really good to have that reassurance that this is an add on to what work has been going on for, you know, years. But I think what I'm particularly pleased is in terms of the equality and diversity, not in the body of the actual report, but we recognise that lots of care levers, so care experience can be a real kind of disadvantage in terms of having a secure home. But I will plead with not forgetting asylum seekers and refugees because that communication that we don't have is the communication, for example, with the Home Office. In Sheffield, we have a high incidence of homelessness coming from people being granted refugee status. And suddenly, you know, it happens suddenly, but it shouldn't because the Home Office know that people are going to get the status. So that communication is so important because we can prevent people being homeless by communicating with each other, with the partners. And in Sheffield, we do so much good partnership work and it's good that this is like, in a way, it's like the cherry on the cake.
Okay, thank you. Right, so a number of points raised there and then I'll come back for another round, but over to you for any responses to this.
So coming to start and I'm going to hand over to Michael for the governance. So very much, thank you very much for the questions, we get questions. And the question around how do we bring the different programmes together? That's one of my key next steps is to think about how we bring together the some activities across Change in Futures, Royal Foundation and homelessness. And that's been one of the conversations that I've been having with colleagues so that we're clear about how they support each other, but very much get to that, bringing that added value together. So that's my next key step and priority to go and do that. And plus also link in to wider partnerships such as the safeguarding partnership and the Health and Wellbeing Board. And so that we've taken a really collective approach across the city around that. And one of the other things I'm also bringing to this, actually in terms of my own kind of role as Strategic Director for Adult Care, is also the focus on valuing our workforce because there's a great workforce at work within the homelessness sector across Sheffield. So we have an approach around a workforce strategy for the care sector and I'm actually including the homeless sector within that. Because there's opportunities that will bring to resupply and value the whole sector. And I think that will also then help to deal with some of the issues that surround here and bring that forward. So that's what I'm bringing together this as SRO so that we absolutely have a cohesive approach ultimately as a city. So to answer to that. And also the other question around how do we link into the issues around refugees and asylum seekers? That's also something that I've recognised, part of looking into the issues here is that we need to think about what's the impact for people, particularly the issues that councillor Agenzio was talking about. So as part of my role, I've also kind of actually set up a work stream to go and start to look at that, particularly some of these issues. So that supports us to go and help us to get the very best outcomes for people as we go forward. But the areas, I think the key thing I think about the Royal Foundation coming to this is that that added value and the additional resources that help us to go and see this as a change programme for the city. And if I think about maybe three or four years ago, when we set up the Change in Futures programme, that was exactly the same thing. We seen that as a change programme, we'll be twin-tracked and said, let's develop a sustainable approach to tackle multiple disadvantage in the city. And to me, that's exactly the same way in which we approach this. Got to take all opportunities. So.
Could I just add one? Is that all right? If I just add one thing? I agree with what you've said Fran about the potential for duplication. And that's where I think, what's the difference? So that we make sure everyone, all our partners understand, if you're working with us as part of the coalition around Homewards, this is what we're focusing on. We can do things in this space, the much earlier prevention, trying things out, the non-statutory work as well, working with different partners, that we're not necessarily going to be focusing on in the Homeless Prevention Steering Group Board and the action planning. That, our strategy and action plan is a statutory requirement that we must have it. So we've got lots of partners involved, but it does focus on the absolute statutory things that we have to do. I think working with Homewards gives us the freedom to try and do other things that we don't have the resources to do. But it must be absolutely clear to everyone so that we don't confuse partners either. I think that's something we've been talking a lot about. And the point around refugees, that people have had their asylum claims is really important for us. We recognise that. They account for 11% of our presentations last year. And partly that was because of the government decisions around well-accelerating decision-making for people. But again, a lot of those people won't be owed a statutory housing duty. So it is recognising lots of people do experience in housing problems who the council don't have to help in that very direct way. So again, I think that's one of the areas of added value that working with Homewards can offer to us.
Yeah, thank you. I guess to add on to that from a foundation perspective, we have a national expert panel which acts as a critical friend to the programme, gives us a steer on how we should operate. And they've recently been reviewing how we've been delivering our programme across the six locations. And one of the things that they really commended Sheffield on was our focus on working with and engaging grassroots, community-led organisations and how we are trying to put the voice of those with lived experience of homelessness into the heart of that work. And I think as we move forwards, that's something that we really want to continue to prioritise. It's definitely best practice in terms of finding solutions that work for everyone in places like Sheffield that are sustainable and long-term. And I think there's something about building that into our governance structures, not just in Sheffield but across all six locations. But I think colleagues have spoken to this point really well, that what Homewards provides is an opportunity for us to focus on some of the points that you've touched on, which are what are the drivers of homelessness in the first instance? And this means that maybe we're not focused on those who are turning up at Howden House day to day, but instead focused on families who are going through conflict and need mediation support or those who are insecure work and need a better opportunity, more money in their pocket in order to stop them being unable to pay rent. So I think the programme has a broader kind of remit maybe to go into new spaces. And that also gives us the opportunity to really leverage in new partners and players as well, which is exciting. I think alongside that is, these action plans are making sure that we've got a clear set of priorities and areas of focus. Whilst having a broad remit is great, there's also the risk that you try to do too many things and you do them badly. And we definitely want to make sure that we focus in on the real priorities for Sheffield and make sure that we do them to the best of our abilities.
And can I just add as well, just in relation to young people with care experience and also asylum seekers and refugees, we've got some really good ideas and activities within our draft action plan around that. So yeah, within those kind of emerging areas of focus, we're discussing those locally with the coalition at the moment.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. So I think councillor Belwin, you just want to come back. Is it around the governance point?
It was just on the strategy part. It was on Suzanne's point really, I think, because I was on the Housing Committee when the homelessness prevention went through. And I do feel it's a little bit more than just the statutory stuff. I feel that, you know, it was starting to look at some prevention stuff. And I do wonder if we need to review that policy in the light of this as well. Otherwise, I do feel we'll be looking at duplication possibly.
Okay, let me take the other questions and then I'll come back and get your views on that. Councillor Crossland, followed by councillor Mohammed, please.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for this report. I think colleagues have said a lot of what I wanted to say, but it does kind of make a change if we get to agree something that will hopefully have a big positive effect for people, that we will be able to see. I think kind of following on from what Fran was saying about possibility for duplication of things, I think this is something that members on the Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee would be really interested in. And there's a lot of work that the officers are doing around this and particularly around trying to stop homelessness before it even happens. So I'm sorry to have to propose putting another meeting in your calendar, but I'd love a briefing for the Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee if that's okay.
Councillor Mohammed.
Thank you. Just following on from councillor Crossland about actually valuing the work that's done already in the city around homelessness and welcoming yourselves, particularly the Royal Foundation, just to add to it. The only thing I'd say is that I have picked up, and I don't know if you have Chair or Alexis and Suzanne has, around the issues that Roundabout, one of our longstanding charities, particularly for young people, are facing, they are facing a cliff edge. Their funding and according to their chief exec at the moment, they've been working with lots of young people from across the city. So it's just a case of trying to get a whole picture. And I wonder whether councillor Crossland, when you do have that briefing, whether we can have a, also looking at the situation, if, God forbid, Roundabout was not to exist, what impact that will have on the city? But welcome you to Sheffield Council and good to see you in person. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. On the point around other committees being briefed, I think that we could all probably draw a link to an aspect of the committee's work with the Homewards project that there is genuinely, it needs to be thought about in a whole council approach. So what I would ask is maybe Alexis, you could liaise with committee chairs to work out the best way in which committees are briefed. Because it could be that there's, you know, maybe there's specific points you want to raise councillor Crossland. But I think raising wider awareness across all committees around this work would be really important so that it's genuinely, we're maintaining that one council approach. But if offline councillor Crossland and Alexis, you could have a conversation around that, that would be terrific. I think on councillor Mohammed's point, I'll come to colleagues in a second, you know, there is press coverage of the issue you've talked about today. I think we need to be clear that they're saying that there is a gap in support, but it is manageable within a year. But they're seeking further resource. So I think we just need to be clear, not set any hairs running at this stage. But, you know, clearly there are acute pressures across the sector because we know that there are record numbers of people, families presenting as homeless every single week, not just in Sheffield, but in every core city and across the whole country. It's partly why temporary accommodation costs are so significant for this council and others. So this is a national issue that is playing out on the streets of towns, villages and cities across the country. And, you know, I think we can all send our thanks to those services like Roundabout and others in the city who are day to day providing an invaluable service to help people who are in really tough times. So colleagues, I'll hand back to you. Do you want to pick up those three points?
So again, thank you very much for the excellent questions. So in terms of the three different questions, there's number one about reviewing the housing policy and the prevention plan that was raised. I think one of the proposals I have is once we have the local action plan and the, and the plans together, what I'm keen to do is take a step back, bring them all together and then have a briefing discussion with members about how we then make some recommendations out of that. Because I think that would be a really helpful next step and very pragmatic to do that. And that's what, to me, is the key next step. And then secondly, in terms of the cross-council work and the governance, what very much I'm keen to do is, as Chair has highlighted, is meet with all chairs of the Strate- of the Strate- of the Strategic Resources Committee and also working across the council so that we see this very much as a cross-council approach. Because literally it's together we get things done and taking this approach. And having been around homelessness for a number of years, actually been around to this sector for a number of years and different guys, it's for me, it is about, it is a shared and joint approach to prevention. That's got to be the core to this. So that's the aim to take. And then in terms of the issue around Roundabout, I'll pick that up out with the committee to find out more and what I can do to support around that. And I think the issue that was raised very much about the impact on people, one of the things that the really questions that's going to come out of this is the so what question, is how do we know that we have made a difference to the people of Sheffield as a result of this programme? So one of the questions, one of the discussions I've had with Michael in particular, is how we create the end of this, create a dashboard, for lack of a better word, that shows the impact on people, the impact that we've had very much in terms of prevention. So that we could show to two members is that by being involved in this, we've actually made a positive difference in people's lives across the city. And I'm very much, you know, if I think about Change in Futures, we talked about earlier on, that was the reason why I gained so much momentum because we were able to show continually that not only the voice of people with lived experience was driving forward change, but also we were able to show the evidence and impact of what we were doing. And that builds trust, it builds commitment and it builds a real momentum for change. So that's what I intend to happen through this programme.
Could I just clarify a point? Is that okay? Is that all right? If I just clarify? Just wanted to clarify Fran, the Homeless Prevention Strategy, sorry if I wasn't clear, it is delivering the statutory duties which include prevention. Because as you all might not remember, but the Homes Reduction Act brought in the prevention duties for us. So I think the value around this programme is it enables to do the earlier help even before we see it coming because that prevention duty is 56 days before. But you're absolutely right, the existing action plan is much broader than someone's just turned up today. Agree? Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Okay, thank you all very much. That's really good questions and thanks very much for your answers today. So not seeing anyone else who wants to comment on this. So what I will do then is turn to our recommendations, that we note the Homewards Sheffield Programme, its aims, ambitions and the progress made. That we endorse the city council's involvement in Homewards Sheffield Programme and partnership with the Royal Foundation. Note that once the local action plan is developed, implications of the plan will be considered by the Strategic Director for Adult Care and Wellbeing, who we didn't say is the senior responsible officer for Homewards in the council, including any approvals required, and requests that the Strategic Director- and requests that the Strategic Director provides an update in 12 months on delivery of the programme. Our colleagues happy to endorse those recommendations. Brilliant, thank you. Well, thank you very much for coming today and for the work that you've done over the first year and the work we will do together over the coming weeks and months and years ahead to make sure that we are doing everything we can in this city to end homelessness. So thank you and we'll look forward to continuing our work together. Thanks. And that, in dare I say, record time for this committee, is the end of Strategy and Resources for this month. And we have our next meeting in mid-October. So thank you all very much for coming today.